North Platte City Council Chambers here on Tuesday, January second, two thousand and twenty four. It's gonna be another exciting year for North Platte as we begin the year, or excuse me, our first meeting on the second day of the year. Just want to update everybody real quick. We no longer, Charter Communications stopped doing their public access channels. They stopped offering them about a month and a half ago somewhere in there. So ALO, like, they kindly picked us up on their public access channel. So we are currently broadcasting on, not only on YouTube as we always do, but also on ALO Channel one. Those of you at home watching know that already. Those of you that might want to watch in the future, now you know what channel. Okay. Calling the meeting officially order. Mr. Rieker, would you lend us an occasion, please?
Dear Lord, dear Lord, we're just coming off, we're just coming off the Christmas season, starting the thing here. Giving thanks and praise and glory. All of the many blessings, all of the many blessings that you've given to us, the wonderful country that you've given us to live in. Wonderful town, wonderful town with all the good people who live here. Lord, I ask that you give us wisdom and humility and charity as we strive to follow your will tonight. Make us yours in all of our decisions, that everything will be for your honor and praise and glory. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Rieker. Roll call vote. Let's see, we don't have Angie. Renee's going in. I'm Kevin. We have a new team in the back here, everybody. So Renee, would you roll call, please? Okay.
Miss Lee.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Bolt.
Here.
Lucas.
Here.
Gary.
Here.
Flanders.
Here.
Rieker.
Here.
Rieker.
Here. Thank you. A current copy of the Hilton Meetings Act of the State of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. Meeting procedure: The public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please identify yourself by stating your name and address. Please address the council through the mayor and limit your remarks. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not being here in the public meeting... Brent Art Berkland of TC Engineering is the city's street superintendent from January one, two thousand and twenty four through December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty four.
Mr. Mayor.
Rieker.
Um, I'd like to remove item number seven from the consent agenda.
Okay.
And then I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item number six and item number seven.
Second.
Okay, motion by Rieker, second by Miss Lee. Calling the question on items one through five and number eight of the consent agenda. Are you there?
I'm, I'm Kevin. Sorry.
That's okay. So let's do a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Miss Lee.
Hi.
Ryan.
Hi.
Bolt.
Hi.
Lucas.
Hi.
Gary.
Hi.
Flanders.
Hi.
Rieker.
Hi.
Woods.
Hi.
Okay. Thank you. Items one through five and number eight consent agenda approved. Like I said, number six is told. Rieker has a question about number seven.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering exactly which page. On page thirty-six. I'm not sure which number I'll follow here, but page thirty-six. I was wondering if maybe Brent or Judy could help me understand. Uh, these lots run north and south. And I know we've been asked to approve a variance for the lot length on this, and that's part of me. But I'm kind of trying to understand why we have seventy feet from back of house to back of house.
Judy, hand over Brent. Please.
Let's see.
Mayor, council, so you're asking why there's seventy feet from the back of the house to the back of the house?
Right.
Is that your question? Um, that's for private drives to go in there. So you're talking this space in between, like right here?
Yeah. Well, you have a little different drawing than I've got, I guess, but I think we're talking about the same thing.
So is it this space here that you're talking about?
Right.
That's for access to get in there. It's like a private drive to access the garage.
So what's the private driveway that's identified in black?
Um, I do have the contractor here, the developer here. Do you want to talk to him?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand this, I guess.
Yes, Josh Rhodes, eight thirty Bronx Road, Carolina, Nebraska. So what you see in coming through the black here will be a private drive. And while we did that, we made a wider road coming in here, a thirty-foot drive. That way we can allow for extra parking to come in that road instead of putting parking out here on eighteen Street. So what we like to do in a lot of these, we like to widen our roads and keep that parking. So then in between these buildings, that leaves all green space for yards, landscaping.
Okay.
People, areas of play, what have you.
Okay, so that's basically yard, yeah?
Yes, what you don't see in the shaded dark areas, that'd be your yard area. Yep, and we need that green space, because otherwise kids got nowhere to play or go, so.
No, okay, you answered my question.
Yeah.
I want to thank you too for coming to town to build these houses.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that, really.
You're welcome. So hopefully, that's not a good problem. Seems like a good area over there for what we're putting in it. So, any other questions?
I'll pay you. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Oh, Mr. Rieker.
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
Centurion, yep, up here. When it's finished, will you individually clap the units, per unit, where they can be sold as individual units? Or will the whole building stay under a single lot?
No, we're gonna keep the whole building on each lot. So that'd be six buildings, six lots in total when it's all done.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anyone else have a question before he sits down?
Isn't...
Go ahead.
No. Isn't there seven on each row?
There's a seven collection there, but they're going one building per lot.
Oh.
So each lot's gonna have seven units, so.
Oh, okay.
Yep, yep. Instead of seven buildings, there'll be just six buildings in total. Six buildings, but there'll be seven units per building.
Oh, I see. You split them down the middle, so.
Yep, yep.
I got you.
That's what you see in where that dark line divides in the middle of that private drive in there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so is that a, that'll be a common law?
Yes, yep, in the center, yep.
Okay.
Yep, that'll be the, that'll be the actual property line going through that concrete there.
Okay. And I also want to thank you for doing this without...
You're welcome.
Real quick, um, I got a little better floor plan from Judy that I believe you sent out to her.
Yeah, that's a preliminary build. We've done a grand now already.
Okay.
That's where we copied that from.
Looks like all three bedroom, or will there be two and three bedroom?
There'll be all three bedrooms, two bath, all have a single car attached garage.
That's kind of what it looked like there. And then, so that garage will be split, one car on each unit, right?
Yes, so as you come down the building, you'll have the unit, the garage.
Yep.
And the next one, start the next unit on the garage.
Yep, that's right.
That garage, it'll be a garage, and what we do on them is we put a two-inch fire wall between every one.
Okay.
One for, I don't know what your code exactly allows in the building department, I haven't got into that yet, but we do that on top of a fire code for sound barrier. That's how we break sound barriers, we're not noise complaints, things like that.
Awesome.
That's, we're pretty good with what we've done already.
Yeah, yeah. Now, it looks like a great little project, so thank you.
See that? You're welcome.
How many square feet are we looking at per user?
About eleven hundred and twenty-two square feet in each unit, and then you have a twelve-by-twenty-four garage with each unit, so.
It'd be perfect size for, sort of, for family.
Yeah, well, you see a lot of it, usually families coming into the workforce, that sort of thing. You would see a lot of going into something like this.
Certainly.
With, uh, with the, uh, packing plant coming in and the industrial center that's put out there in more of that first year.
Yep.
We lot outside of town, that area would be a good fit for both of those, the health house, for employers, you know, and employers coming in too, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor? I thought you were gonna...
Did you have a question?
I was gonna offer a motion.
Oh. Well, uh, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve item number seven on the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Rieker, second by Gary. Do you like, we'll have to do a, uh...
I need, I need to go look.
Okay. Would you roll call vote, please, for us, Renee?
Miss Lee.
Hi.
Ryan.
Hi.
Bolt.
Hi.
Lucas.
Hi.
Gary.
Hi.
Flanders.
Hi.
Rieker.
Hi.
Woods.
Hi.
Number seven is passed. Moving on to the regular agenda. Number nine, election of council president for two thousand and twenty-four. First, before we go anywhere, I want to thank Mr. Miss Lee for being the last council president. At least, I don't know how many years you've been the council president, Mr. Miss Lee, but it's been a few.
Yes, I haven't counted.
Okay. We would need a nomination.
And, Mr. Mayor, I move to elect Jim Miss Lee as council president for two thousand and twenty-four. And I did visit with him this morning, or this afternoon, at three o'clock, and he was willing to do that.
Second. Motion by Bolt, second by Gary. Any other nominations?
Well, there we go.
We'll, we'll do an experiment here in a second. And you have me on there, and I don't typically vote.
He probably shouldn't be on this, would he?
Yeah. Okay, so do we have any discussion or any other nominations? Okay. This is not the actual vote. We're gonna experiment, see what this thing does. So, this half of the room vote no, or this half of the room vote yes, we're not voting on anything, we're just testing this thing right here. All right.
We're voting, we're, we're not voting on anything, we're just testing the technology here, so just...
Takes some years off, I think that's a short look.
Just needs you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
We didn't vote.
Can you get rid of me?
I don't think that was...
We don't see any results here. Okay, well, moving back to the old way.
Let's go back to the old way.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote on Jim Miss Lee as council president for two thousand and twenty-four.
Miss Lee.
He has to abstain.
Ryan.
I have to abstain.
Or A, or whatever you want.
Yes? Yes. Bolt.
Hi.
Lucas.
Hi.
Gary.
Hi.
Flanders.
Hi.
Rieker.
Hi.
Woods.
Hi.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Miss Lee, you are once again the council president.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody.
All right. I know, I appreciate all those things I call you Black, but say I can't...
Glad to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, number ten. Approve the purchase of a permanent shade structure to go over the grandstand spectator area at Billwood Field in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty cents out of the ARPA funds and authorize the mayor to sign all documents.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents for commercial recreation specialists to install a shade system, shade structure at Billwood Field and use ARPA funds in the amount of one thousand, seven dollars, four hundred and seventy-two cents, or four hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty cents for its purchase.
Second.
Motion by Bolt, second by Flanders. Angie, you want to tell us what we're doing here?
So, we've had it over the years, um, requests as at Billwood Field in the grandstand. Um, a lot of those games are middle of the afternoon, and in the summertime, that sun's right down on top of the spectator, makes it a little bit uncomfortable. And the shade structure would just make it much more enjoyable, um, spectator event for people. So that is what this is, um, for. The way that it's outlined in here, it, the structure itself goes behind the grandstand, so there isn't a whole lot of disruption to what's existing, and it just makes a nice, uh, permeable structure that would offer shade for spectators. Um, the advocate in, in the group, have given any other questions? And the package kind of has a, the layout and everything of this.
I never present the thing, upper hairline, appreciate that.
Yes, for sure.
Dr. Murdock, anything to add?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, I've summed it up to say two percent say no. So I'm here, um, representing Legion baseball on the threat. He's a current board member. Uh, and we're just asking, uh, to really give strong consideration to the shade. Um, with youth baseball and the Legion program, ironically, the, the main complaints we get out of Billwood Field have nothing to do with the field itself. It's the restrooms and the lack of shade. Um, and fitting myself, shade is very important. The hard part for, you know, for Billwood Field and the Legion programs, it's a, it's an interesting relationship in that, you know, this is city-owned park, yet the Legion is put forth, uh, a lot of funds and a lot of time, um, trying to improve the field in order to improve the sport, uh, for Legion, to be able to get more, uh, district tournaments, more state tournaments, more tournaments in general. Subsequently now with Pico's League and the, and the North Flat Indians coming in, um, you know, we just want to improve the field the best we can. For the Legion's part in that, we have reached out, uh, to other entities as well, uh, and we'll be installing the brand-new, uh, netting system, not unlike what is being, or what has been built at the, uh, softball complex. And we think this would be a great addition to it. As Mr. Administrator said, this, it's a structure system where the poles are behind, um, the backstop with a shade lining over the top, uh, so it should provide very minimal interference. By report, this is a, is a very good company, uh, very reliable company. It's a very reliable shade system. So, um, with your support, uh, hopefully you can improve the field and the dynamics of it and, um, get that spectator, get those spectators out there to enjoy the, the game too.
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Murdock, while he's standing here? Donna?
Thank you. Does this price include any maintenance agreement or ongoing servicing if necessary, or?
There's no ongoing servicing, but there is a warranty. And that warranty is structured based upon the component. So, I believe it's the last page of what would be included in your document. There's a limited twenty-year warranty on the posts themselves, uh, and the support frames, ten years on the fabric, three-year, uh, warranty if you go with a different type of fabric, and then a one-year warranty on the, the powder coat finish of the poles, and then the, uh, the moving parts that allow you to actually roll in the structure, the, the, uh, shade system itself.
So, after the warranty expired, is it going to continue to stand down in the house? So, they don't have to do that? It takes something special?
I don't know how to do it. But, uh, my guess would be, um, it would probably be a, a combination of, of city, uh, help along with the Legion program. The Legion program and the Legion parents and the board have primarily taken on the task of keeping the majority of that field up to date and getting advancements. Councilman Bowles was on that board, and that was probably the last set of improvements when they were able to get bleachers put in, uh, to that system over there. So, I think, you know, between the parents and the board members, you've got a very active and very, um, outgoing, willing-to-dive-in group. So, uh, I would assume that that would be, that would take the responsibility of the maintenance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, uh, Dr. Murdock, thanks for putting this together. We really need this at the ballpark. I was quizzing Councilman Bowles earlier today on the, my biggest question with this was the use of a, kind of a summer-type facility that, I, it's not like temporary, but it's more movable or temporary versus building, you know, just building constructed, uh, constructed shade roof there. And how did you guys decide to go this route? I'm certainly not questioning this to be a good idea, but I'd like to just understand.
Cost.
Is, is cost making a difference?
Cost, um, and actually, in what research I did, this actually held up to elements better than a, a standard structure, or a, you know, a, a solid structure, I guess, if you want to call it that.
Yeah, well, we were discussing earlier, we wondered if a hard constructed shelter would be double or triple the cost of, of this, uh, ballpark.
Yes. More towards the triple.
Okay.
I'm gonna do a little dialogue on this, Mr. Mayor. And Sean, thank you for bringing this to the council. Little history with Billwood Field, um, built in nineteen fifty-six. And the very first game that was played here, the North Flat Indians, which were a form of, of B-level division of Major League Baseball, the North Flat Indians affiliated with Cleveland Indians, Jim Perry was the first pitcher of Billwood Field. And Jim Perry wound up, wound up his major league career, finished up with the Texas, or, excuse me, the Minnesota Twins, but he's had three, three All-Star appearances, um, the Cy Young Award winner, and numerous MVPs of the league, so. There are only three ballparks in Nebraska that still stand, Billwood Field, Duncan Field in Hastings, and Sherman Field over in Lakewood that have the history and the heritage, um, of our field. So, it, it's, it's a really cool field. It stayed, the dugouts were, were built at that time, they've sustained, uh...
A tornado out of Billwood Field directly?
From, I can primarily speak from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty-three, so I've been intimately familiar with Billwood Field. But in that time, Legion baseball has, um, put ninety-eight percent of the money into Billwood Field. The city does, uh, supply lights, water, and trash and mowing. And in two thousand and eleven, uh, we got twelve thousand dollars in aluminum funds to help fill the seventy-five thousand dollar grandstand that was there. Prior to that, it was wood, and we got to repair it every year, and it was falling apart. So we got the aluminum grandstands in there. The reason, but besides that, no capital improvements have been done on city budgets, uh, to Billwood Field. It's all been at these fancy Legion baseball. Really, why we're here, in two thousand and twenty, uh, Legion baseball played a season without fans because of COVID, and they, they lost their shores. Legion has never had a lot of money to begin with, because the operating budget, when I was running it, was sixty thousand dollars. Now it's probably closer to seventy-five thousand dollars of an operating budget that they do on themselves every year. And now that we have the Pico's League coming in and two high school teams, North Flat High and St. Pat's playing there, there is going to be much more baseball being played there, and we really need to, to cooperate and use some city funds for this where there have been none in the past. So I feel, I feel it's, uh, integral that we get the shade up there, because like you said, that is the number one issue that we have out there, besides that. So, uh, this is a, this is a good step in the right direction, so I think this is a great project. It could really help to, to further and update Billwood Field for a period to come, so, thank you.
Ed?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, I've had some personal experience with the fabric-covered buildings. Now, I know this isn't a building, but, uh, they're very durable, and, uh, the fabric is very, very durable. Uh, the, the question that I have is, when, when it comes time to replace it, do you have any kind of cost for a replacement of the fabric itself? I know it says a ten-year warranty.
No, and they don't have a breakdown in the quote itself of what is the, the major component of that sixty-two thousand dollar, which is material cost. Working on, you know, the, the backstop structure at this point in time, I can tell you the bulk majority of the cost of that structure is the metal poles. Um, so I would guess that that would be about the same, um, percentage-wise. So, I would envision, you know, probably twenty-five to thirty, but that's really honestly just a guess.
And then, do you anticipate the fabric will be taken off during the offseason?
Taken off or rolled up. Yep.
Okay. And then I suppose this question is probably more for the council and the mayor. Do, you mentioned something about restrooms and bathrooms. Are, are we, are we doing anything along those lines to facilitate a, an upgrade in the bathrooms? If in fact they need, they need to have that done?
We're working on planning how we might approach that.
Okay.
I guess, there are no specific plans, but, uh, we're kind of curious. The bathrooms need to be improved regardless of how successful the Pico's are, so we're sort of curious how that's going to be. And then we, hopefully we do something about bathrooms.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Lost lane, got a bad cold, so.
I guess I would just say I did attend a game last year, and it was fun, very enjoyable, but I don't think I used the bathroom. Can't remember the bathroom, one way or the other, so. But it was nice. It was an evening game, so.
There's some chance you might have been there. Okay. Uh, let's do, do we have any more questions for Dr. Murdock, while he's standing? Okay, Dr. Murdock, with you. Since we have the voting, uh, let's do another test. We're not voting on anything. Are you feeling okay with that, Renee?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, that's right. So this time, everybody vote yes. We're just testing, we're not voting on anything. Make that clear. So, okay, everybody pretend we're voting. Please vote yes. Please vote yes. Mr. Webb, it appears that you guessed it. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Hey, hey.
Success. I think.
Now, let's get back to the voting.
You know how you do that? There you go. You did it.
Okay, Renee, now we're gonna vote for real.
For real.
We need a little thingy back up, please.
Maybe. This is real touchy, I can tell you right now.
We were so close.
Okay, you try it. I don't have the touch.
The technology is so wonderful when it works correctly. It's a real challenge, but it does. Okay, well, while Kevin works on that, Renee, would you roll a call vote? Item number 11, please. No, excuse me, item number 10.
Missley.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Volks.
Aye.
Lucas.
Aye.
Brad.
Aye.
Flanders.
Aye.
Reeker.
Aye.
Woods.
Aye.
Not the Flanders. Thank you.
Item number 10 has passed. Okay, keep working on it, see if you get that voting here back good, please. Moving on to item number 11. Kevin, I need you to read here. Action on, actions with Dr. Murdock's number 4156 to create sanitary sewer connection district number 22 at 15-inch PVC sanitary sewer beginning on Echo Drive approximately 1,300 feet south of Walker Road, thence north to Walker Road, thence west along Walker Road to Buffaloville Avenue. Kevin is reading in place of Lane tonight. Kevin, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 4156, an ordinance creating sanitary sewer connection district number 22 within and without the corporate limits of the city of North Flat, Lincoln County, Nebraska, establishing the outer boundaries of the district, designating the size, location, and terminal points, and referring to plans and specifications and estimates of the city engineer in connection there with, on file with the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 4156 in order to create sanitary sewer connection district number 22 as presented in the council materials on first reading.
Second. Motion by Reeker, second by Garrick. Discussion on item number 11. Mr. Reeker?
Yeah, could we get an explanation of maybe what the project's like and who's paying for what, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Brent Burton, City Engineer. We received from Quick Stop a petition for sewer at the location of Buffalo and Walker Road. And what we're proposing is a connection district, and a connection district is one that you pay when you connect. And the sewer was put in in 2018, 19. It runs east and west along the Fremont Slough. It went all the way over to Buffalo, and Pals connected in at that time. That's that sewer that we'll be connecting in on that. And as part of that project, it was stubbed out north on Echo. So where we're gonna connect in is where it's stubbed out to on Echo, we go north on Echo to Walker, and then we're gonna go west on Walker, terminating at Buffalo. And we're working on getting the, the routing picked out exactly where that, but Echo is a gravel drive over gravel street in that area, and then we're gonna go along probably the south side of Walker. And there's sewer for the Catholic Church over there right now, and that sewer in Walker is very shallow. It's, it really can't be extended any further because of depth slope issues. So this will allow us to redo some of that sewer, and then anybody along there that wants to connect will be charged for the connection, and be based on a front footage assessment.
What's your, what's the total cost estimate for the project altogether?
We're looking at probably in the 600,000 to 700,000 range is what we're looking at. And the size is 15-inch. That's not what is needed for the petition request if it's being sized for the entire area. It's a 15-inch that is stubbed out. The master plan is this could go extend all the way up to the interstate and underneath the interstate as development warrants. It also can go further west on Walker, underneath Buffalo, and continue further west. So the sizing is for the bigger picture of the community development in that area.
Okay.
And the, the connection will allow us to not, any part that goes along the city, we'd be assessing the city, which then we wouldn't pay. So we're doing it as a connection district. Or for any of that property, whoever owns it or uses it would pay for a connection.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Brent, I'm pretty familiar with that. Will that sewer go down the ground of the road? Is that the plan that we're going and go?
What we're looking at is probably the ditch.
Area, that's where we're looking at having it go. Probably the east.
And then we've got asphalt there on the west side of the church, so would that be bored underneath there?
We'd probably trench it and put it back. It's gonna be deep enough that, and it's gonna be too flat to bore. The slope will be too flat.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, everybody, we're gonna test the voting system for real here.
It's safe, go ahead.
It's safe? Okay. All right. Calling the question on item number 11, please use the electronic voting. Your cursor is running around on the screen out here. Yeah. Okay, there we go. Item number 11 has passed. Thank you.
Suspense was good.
Okay, we're opening up a public hearing, and the public hearing is item number 12, to discuss and consider action on an application by Tri-State Broadcasting Association, Inc., for a conditional use permit to allow extension of an existing radio communication tower from 70 feet to 110 feet located at 201 South Bailey in a B-2 highway commercial district on property described as Lot 1 KJLT replat, North Platt, Nebraska. As opening up the public hearing, if you have a comment on extending this antenna, please come forward, tell us who you are and where you live, and we'll listen to your comments. Not that we were expecting a lot of comments on this one. If you appear that none of the audience would like to comment.
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Reeker to close the public hearing. Calling the question of closing the public hearing. Please. Public hearing is now closed. Council will now consider item number 12 to discuss, consider an action on the application by Tri-State Broadcasting Association, Inc., for a conditional use permit to allow extension of an existing radio communication tower from 70 feet to 110 feet located at 201 South Bailey in a B-2 highway commercial district on property described as Lot 1 KJLT replat, North Platt, Nebraska.
A move that we find the request for a conditional use permit to allow extension of an existing radio communications tower from 70 foot to 110 foot located at 201 South Bailey Avenue meets the minimum standards stated in the North Platt Code of Ordinances, Section 156.322, and approve and grant with the condition that all elements of the application are complied with based on the following factual findings. The use shall conform to all applicable ordinances, laws, and regulations of any governmental jurisdiction. The use shall have adequate water, sewer, and drainage facilities. Ingress and egress shall be so designated as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The use shall, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. The use shall be in harmony with the character of the area and the most appropriate use of the land.
Second. Motion by Garrick, second by Reeker. Discussion on item number 12. Seeing none, calling the question on item number 12, please. Item number 12 has passed. Thank you. Another public hearing. This one will consider adopting ordinance number 4157, annexing parcel ID number 0053645, comma 0053635, and 003, oh, excuse me, 0053585 dot 10, described as part of the east half west quarter and part of the west half west quarter, Section 2 Township 13 North, Range 30 West, the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and part of Lot 3 and Lot 4, northern of suburban irrigation ditch, and part of accretions of Lot 3 and Lot 4, Section 11 Township 13 North, Range 30 West, the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and consisting of approximately 209 acres on first reading. This is the public hearing. Anyone who'd like to comment on this item, please approach the podium and tell us who you are and let us know which comment it is. Lot of talk, oh, I wondered how long you'd be able to sit there.
Gary Pearson, President, North Platterade Chamber Development Corporation, which is located at 502 South Dewey. The Chamber has been working with this development team and local investment group who are bringing this annexation forward. I'd also like to commend on your next agenda item and that public hearing, the brewers and the blowers, who recognize the importance of this step in, in moving North Platt forward. This is a piece of property that's sitting in the middle of the community, and it kind of has a donut hole surrounded by all city property on all sides. In normal development practices and good development practices in communities, you, you don't have donut holes. You, you grow your community accordingly and, and the properties that are adjacent. So I really commend both groups that have voluntarily asked for the annexation. This is a historically significant move for North Platt to move forward, grow our community for the first time in about 40 years. And they have a wonderful master plan development and working in unison with city staff. I'm anxious for you to eventually see that master plan. It will be a game changer for North Platt and really set the stage for this community for a long, long time to come. It's, it's something that's going to develop over time, but it is extraordinarily significant, and I would highly encourage you to adopt both the annexation proposals over the next two agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment or question? You okay over there? It would appear that no one else has a question.
Mr. Mayor? I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion by Reeker, second by Lucas to close the public hearing. Calling the question on closing the public hearing, please. Public hearing is now closed. Council will now consider adopting ordinance number 4157, annexing the parcel IDs I read a moment ago. I'm not going to read them again because Kevin is gonna read it here when he reads the ordinance in a second. Kevin, would you read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 4157, ordinance of the mayor and the council of the city of North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska, to include within the corporate limits of the city of North Platt certain lands described as part of the east half west fourth and part of the west half west fourth, Section 2 Township 13 North, Range 30 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and part of the Lot 3 and Lot 4, north of suburban irrigation ditch, and part of accretions of Lot 3 and 4, Section 11 Township 13 North, Range 13 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Re, Reeker.
I move to adopt ordinance number 4157, annexing parcel ID number 0053645.00, 0053635.00, and 0053585.10, described as part of the east one half west one quarter and part of the west one half west one quarter, Section 2 Township 13 North, Range 30 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and part of Lot 3 and Lot 4, north of the suburban irrigation ditch, and part of accretions of Lot 3 and Lot 4, Section 11 Township 13 North, Range 30 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, consisting of approximately 209 acres on first reading.
Second. Motion by Reeker, second by Lucas. Discussion on item number 13. Donna?
Did we not have to plan this? We just brought the, the city this.
Yes, we do.
They do not, no.
Anyone want to make a comment on the development?
Do I need to start, state my name?
Tell us who you are, Austin, and roughly what your address is.
Yeah, yeah, Austin Hellis, Ashland, Nebraska. Is that good enough?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, what was the question again?
Curious about what the future plan of the property is.
Yeah, so we're looking at mixed-use development, primarily affordable housing. We have some commercial and industrial mix in as well. But our number-one focus is bringing affordable housing to the community.
Okay, if it's annexed through the city, do you want to ask for, have some confirmation?
We do, yeah. Within our redevelopment plan will show without TIF, the plan's not possible financially. Commercial needs that, that are currently missing. The industrial piece is specifically important for the single-family side, so we can have the proper amount of material staged on-site, so all of our subcontractors can keep equipment stored, material can be kept on-site. That's gonna be really critical for us to be able to build on schedule and in volume we're looking at.
So that industrial is gonna be kind of transitory use? When you're, when you're done constructing, then it'll move into another use?
We're planning on it staying as light industrial. We don't know what the long-term purpose will be or who will be in those buildings, but we plan on those staying.
Mr. Mayor, Lucas?
And I apologize, this may cross over three items, and I can ask these questions each time if I need to, but I was trying to reconcile the annexations to the Extreme Light map, or, and maybe this is just a question for you, Judy, but are the, the blower's property, the brewer property, both, are they all-inclusive in the Extreme Light study? It looked like they were, but I wanted to confirm that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think, does that, that probably answers your question a little bit too, doesn't it, Donna?
You know what I stand?
No, I know, I, I know. But I guess I just want to make sure we're, that we're clear that the two properties that are up for annexation are, are included in that Extreme Light portion. Thank you.
Other questions for Austin while you're back there? Austin, reserve the right to call you back up, but you can sit down.
Thank you.
Other discussion on item number 12. Ron, 13? No, Ron, 12? Oh, I'm sorry, I just, my focal failure, everyone, sorry. Okay, 13. Other discussion, item number 13.
I guess we do annex it, and then it's in the, I guess, I don't know, it seems like we do many two steps at one time. I guess that's what we're doing.
Well, this item, this item is just.
Well, the, is it?
No other questions or comments? Seeing none, calling the question on item number thirteen. Item number thirteen is passed. We'll now consider a public hearing to adopt ordinance number 4158, annexing parcel ID 0055485 and 0053596, described as North Platt Farm subdivision, part of tract A, south half of lot three and north half of section ten, township thirteen north, range thirty to sixth pridium, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and a tract of land in part of the southeast quarter of section four, township thirteen north, range thirty of the sixth PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, into the corporate limits of the city of North Platt, consisting of approximately forty-one point eight six acres on first reading. This is a public hearing. Anyone has any questions or comments, please approach the microphone and let us know what It would appear that no one has a question or a comment at this point.
I move we close public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Vols, second by Garrick to close the public hearing. Calling the question on closing the public hearing, please. Did you get a new battery for Mr. Wood's clicker there? It's a little slow sometimes. Okay, that item is passed. Public hearing is now closed. Council will now consider adopting ordinance number 4158 of the annexation. Kevin, would you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4158, in ordinance of the mayor and the council of the city of North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska, to include within the corporate limits of the city of North Platt, certain lands described as North Platt Farm subdivision, part of the tract A, south half of lot three and north half of section ten, township thirteen north, range thirty west of the sixth PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and a tract of land in the part of the southeast quarter of section four, township thirteen north, range thirty west of the sixth PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4158, annexing parcel ID 0055485.00 and 0053596.00, described as North Platt Farm subdivision, part of tract A, south half of lot three and north half of section ten, township thirteen north, range thirty west of the sixth PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4158, annexing parcel ID 0055485.00 and 0053596.00, described as North Platt Farm subdivision, part of tract A, south half of lot three and north half of section ten, township thirteen north, range thirty west of the sixth PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and a tract of land in the part of southeast one-fourth of section four, township thirteen north, range thirty west of the sixth PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, into the corporate limits of the city of North Platt, consisting of approximately forty-one point eight six acres on first reading.
Second. Motion by Lucas, second by Vols. Discussion on item number fourteen. Highly similar to our last item, but different piece of property. Do I have any questions or comments? Calling the question on item number fourteen, please. Item number fourteen is passed. Item number fifteen, public hearing. Adopt resolution as presented in council materials regarding the city of North Platt, Nebraska, southeastern analysis, area update, blight and substandard study as prepared by Marvin Planning Consultants, Inc., and approval of related actions. Opening the public hearing officially on item number fifteen. Judy, you want to give us a little quick blurb on what we're doing here?
Mayor, Council, Judy Clark, Planning Administrator. So what you see in front of you is a update to the original blight and substandard study that was done back in nineteen ninety-seven. The city just felt that this was something worth revisiting, just to make sure that all the criteria are still met, because that study was done quite a few years ago. So it's just an update. Most of the property included in this update was in the original nineteen ninety-seven version, and this is to just go in and recertify that the criteria are still there, and it's meant to be blighted and substandard.
Thank you. Okay, public hearing for this piece of property. If you wouldn't have any comments or questions on item number fifteen. It appears that Mr. Pearson has a comment.
Gary Pearson, President, North Platte Area Chamber Development Corporation, located at 502 South Dewey. We started working with the developers and the investors on this. Many of the investors are involved in other business operations here, some of them creating a significant amount of jobs, and to their credit, they know that they got to be part of the solution in addition to creating jobs when it comes to housing, because without the housing, we're not going to have place for jobs to sleep at night. So that was a critical component when we first started down this. As Mr. Hillis said, you know, to do any kind of a housing subdivision of any magnitude, you just aren't in the game if you cannot offer tax increment financing as a community. The costs have risen substantially over the years, and the beauty of TIF is it creates something out of nothing. And it's using the developers' good intentions of investment in a community, and also using those investment dollars to put back into infrastructure. They still pay all the taxes, and the domino effect and residual impact continues to bring additional good fortune to the community as well as additional tax revenue. And if I may, Mayor, there is a couple of charts I'd like to share with the council members, some research I've put together. I've done this in the past, some of you have seen something similar in the past, but I think it'll really help you understand why tax increment financing and community growth coincide with one another, and why it's a critical component of making development happen in a community. So the audience knows what I'm talking about is, I've done, is you go back to the nineteen eighty census, and that's forty-plus years ago in the state of Nebraska, and there's basically what you'd call seven trade center county seat communities in the state of similar size. In nineteen eighty, North Platt ranked number one out of those seven community trade areas in population. You fast-forward that through four census periods at time, four decades, in 2022, and these figures are from the U.S. Census Bureau itself. So based on the 2020 census, they projected that out to the end of 2022, and now North Platt ranks number seven out of those seven communities. We ranked number one forty years ago, now we rank dead last. And every other one of those communities grew in population. North Platt did not. We lost seventeen hundred and eighty-seven residents since nineteen eighty. So then you flip it over, and I'm not talking about TIF since day one, when it went way back. I'm talking about actual active projects still on the state books with the Nebraska Department of Revenue. And so you go down that report, and you see how many current TIF projects each one of those trade center communities have. The little, or the H, the thing in parentheses, tells you how many of those TIF projects are actually related to housing. And so that's the difference there. But they range from a high of Carney having forty-seven active projects, Eastings thirty-five, Norfolk thirty-three, Scotts Brook Gearing twenty-five, Columbus twenty-one, Fremont twelve, North Platt ten. High is Norfolk having twenty-three housing projects currently in an active TIF process. And then it goes into the value of the increment that's been basically frozen through the TIF until it comes on to the tax rolls. And you can see that North Platt has been the most conservative in approaching TIF of any of those communities. It ranges from a high of a hundred and eighty-seven million currently in a TIF process at Fremont, a hundred and six million in Carney, down to a thirty-one million in North Platt. These statistics are year-ending 2022, which are the latest statistics of the state of Nebraska. And then the last item is the percentage of city valuation that it represents, how many TIF projects and what that represents in your total valuation. These are the state figures. These are not mine. So I just accumulated and put them together. But I thought it was very valuable to understand in the next two public hearings why this is critical, and why developers request TIF when they come in if they're going to do a major subdivision, because it's the only way they can do it. It's the only way they can afford to do it. And when you look at that donut hole and the enormous amount of infrastructure that's going to take to develop, that burden would be solely on the city in other types of development practices if you wanted to open a new development area and try to entice developers by running street systems in there. You've got developers willing to help some of that burden, you know, shoulder it, to bring these projects forward that will generate those revenues. So that's why, you know, I think it correlates perfectly when you see communities do this kind of, I mean, I want to commend North Platt, the last two to three years, and the votes that have come out of the Planning Commission and the City Council have springboarded a lot of these projects coming forward. We now have $2.3 billion of new projects emerging in North Platt, Lincoln County, and it would not have happened without tax increment financing. So we've come a long ways, but we've still got a long ways to go. A lot of these communities have been doing this over and over and over again the last thirty to forty years, and we have been hit and miss, one here, one there, maybe one, two years from now, and that's why we're, the needle's not been moving in our favor. We know with what the opportunities we have right now, if we're willing to take advantage of those opportunities, make sure those jobs don't become frustrated because they can't find a place to live. And even current existing employers will tell you the same thing when trying to recruit people here, and the state of Nebraska has done studies. The number one frustration the younger generation has in the reason they moved from North Platt, the lack of housing, the lack of affordable housing, the lack of available housing is, continues to be ranked higher and higher all the time. So our community needs to do its part. You've got willing investors that are willing, and developers that are going to take a tremendous risk. It's probably not one they would take in common, ordinary times, but because they know they helped create the jobs, they're willing to stand up and move this community forward, but they need a city government to embrace that opportunity and make this happen, and you're the only ones that can under the law to allow this to occur. So I'd highly encourage you to not only pass the blight, but also the extreme blight. You look at the amount of infrastructure that's got to go in there, and it really is daunting, the amount of expense. I think, I don't know if Greg Wilkie's here tonight, but I think he said it perfectly at the Planning Commission last week, and Greg is known in his day as a very conservative banker. He had to be convinced that extreme blight was a worthy thing to have, that it met the litmus test and the standard, and he did his own research, and he challenged people, and now he's one of the biggest believers. In fact, he said at the Planning Commission meeting, he says, "I look at this," and he says, "Why wouldn't we? Why wouldn't we do that?" Doesn't mean you're going to grant twenty years TIF to everybody that comes along, because they can vet all that out through the process and the CRA, but it invites people to look at North Platt, and we have a chance to be a leader, not somebody that's following the pack on this. Omaha, Lincoln, Grand Island, Houston, and the communities our size have not yet. So we have a chance to do something, to move the needle, to justify why people said North Platt was Nebraska's Community of the Year. And this is just one more step along the way that we've got to believe in ourself. So please, adopt this.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions or comments?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Eric Seacrest. I live at 109 South Maloney Drive. For the record, I do not have a personal interest in any development project in the area under consideration or in the beef plant at all. But I do have a long-running interest in this community, especially for decent, affordable housing and good roads where they're needed. The new sustainable beef plant is going to need an adequate workforce of over eight hundred employees. North Platt doesn't have enough housing now, and we're going to need to develop a lot of new workforce housing very soon. The area under consideration here includes the city's last remaining undeveloped land south of East Philip Avenue and north of the river, the last one. It also borders this river and a designated flood plain, and building construction on that land within the flood plain is going to need a lot of expensive fill. This is a tough area in many parts. The project will require enormous amounts of city infrastructure improvements, streets, sidewalks, electrical service, water service, sanitary sewers, and storm sewers. Developers in this city and in most cities are normally responsible for paying for the city improvements that benefit the project. And for paying for an enormous amount of infrastructure often kills the project. This project could go away if it doesn't, if it doesn't make sense. Kills the project unless there is development assistance. This area will eventually need the dedication of right-of-way and the funding to develop another east-west arterial street that will eventually connect to Newbury. The community has it in our plan, we need another connection at Newbury. The city of North Platt declared most of this area under consideration as blighted and substandard back in nineteen ninety-seven. Imagine that. This area certainly hasn't gotten much better since then. The southeast part of the city has considerable amounts of mobile homes, multifamily housing, as well as commercial and industrial businesses, exactly what they're talking about. It fits. This is an extremely promising place to put new workforce housing and to help develop existing worn-out housing that needs to be rehabilitated or replaced. Beginning around the time of the Great Recession in 2008, there was a significant decrease in the number of houses built all across America, whether it's both stick-built and All across America, there's a pressing need for workforce housing. Now, anyone who's taken the time and engaged building professionals to study the costs of developing housing that includes infrastructure improvements can tell you, you can't do it in a financially meaningful, stable, rational way unless there's some kind of development Without assistance, workforce housing in this community won't happen. Tax increment development assistance has been available in Nebraska for decades. It is not unique to Nebraska, at least At least forty-eight of the fifty states have a similar program, some kind of tax increment development assistance. Why? Because the cost of infrastructure and development expenses were making worthy projects such as workforce housing impossible without assistance. It's a choice. It's a binary choice. You either do it or you don't do it. And depending on how you make the choice, you get what you get. It's widely used in Nebraska, as Gary Pearson has so, so well-told the story. Currently, that same report he cited showed there are a hundred and thirty-eight cities in this state that use it. A hundred and thirty-eight. This is not some unusual thing. Nebraska cities that are using it, including nearby cities, Gothenburg, Cozette, Lexington, Paxton, Ogallala, McCook, they're using it. It's used all over. Now, as the people's representatives on the City Council, you deal with what comes in front of you, and you have limited choices. And I recognize that can be frustrating. This is not a perfect world. This is the world we have, the laws that our state government passed. That's the choice. I urge you to choose the choice that helps deal with the problems and the opportunities we have in front of us now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment or a question? Excuse me, a comment. It would appear that no one else has a comment.
I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Volz, second by Riker to close the public hearing. Calling the question on closing the public hearing, please. Public hearing is now closed. Item number fifteen. Council will now consider adopt resolution as presented in council materials regarding the city of North Platte, Nebraska southeastern analysis area update blighted and substandard study as prepared by Marvin Planning Consultants, Inc., and approval of related actions.
I move to adopt resolution as presented in council materials regarding the city of North Platte, Nebraska southeastern analysis area update blighted and substandard study as prepared by Marvin Planning Consultants, Inc., and approval of related actions.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Flanders. Discussion on item number fifteen.
Just a quick comment. You know, the floodplain issue is real here. I never thought we'd see this area of town develop. I really never did. When I moved back in my banking career, it was about twenty-two years ago, and the first seven or eight years, we spent all of our time chasing flood insurance in North Platte because everything was in the floodplain unless it was south or north of the rivers by a pretty good distance. And then, under, I think Judy and Jim Hox's leadership, they redid the whole floodplain. Well, this area was the sacrificial lamb because of its lower area and the way the water's flowing out there. And I truly never thought you'd see this area develop. And as I've thought a lot about what's on the table with these projects, if you didn't have a very large-scale project, I don't think anybody in a small basis could figure out how to really beat the floodplain issue that's here and raise this ground up to where I can't even imagine the effort it will take to do that. But I truly never thought in my lifetime we'd see this area of land, the floodplain area develops. Very, a lot of admiration for the people that are tackling this project because we could have driven by this land and all that wasted backbone infrastructure and never used it.
Other questions or comments? Excuse me, Donna.
Not the same exact area, but almost the same exact area. It did add in the trailer court that's north of Philip that was not in the original study. So it did add a little bit into it, but otherwise it's ninety-five percent the same.
I did receive a call today from the constituency office, and they called this study, this area. And she's not at all happy. I told her that we've been told it doesn't affect evaluation of the property or anything. It just wasn't the point to get the designation. I just don't know if I can. I know this is just an update, and I don't have a problem with that. And because I did hear from her, she told me her neighbors didn't know about it. I told her neighbors are going to have to be more aggressive in trying to find out what's going on with the city government. I explained that to her, too. And she tells me no one's real happy about this. I guess that's it. I mean, I'm on the fence on this since it's already had a study, and this is just an update, but if he changes, I guess it doesn't matter. It has to be another. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Riker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions on this information that Mr. Pearson had presented, if I could ask them.
Gary?
Sure.
Thank you, Gary. This is dated 2022. Is this reflecting the sustainable beef?
No. It's not. But it's not reflecting any of the twenty-three projects, not only in North Platte, but none of the others either. State just does a report, probably comes out four or five months after the close of the year. But yeah, anything you adopted in twenty-three is not included that in that, nor are any of the other communities twenty-twenty-three projects.
If we added that on to there, Gary, how much would that add to our?
I think the TIF was twenty million, the increment on it was, so.
And that would be just for sustainable beef?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so that would get us up in that fifty million range somewhere. Okay. And when I'm looking at particularly Fremont, they had a huge, huge increase in their tax increment.
It's a Costco.
Excuse me?
It's the Costco chicken operation and some of the other projects they tipped along with it and some of the ancillary projects that came in.
And I guess, and I look at Carney, they've got forty-seven active projects, the way it looks, and out of those forty-seven, nine are housing. It seems to me like when I look at these numbers, excuse me, these, the number of projects and the increase in tax value, tax increment value, seems to be weighted pretty heavy to industry.
Well.
And so when I look at this.
Carney's really isn't. I mean, they have a diversity of projects, but a lot of motels, a lot of housing subdivisions. But yeah, I mean, one big industry project can throw, it's just, I'm just giving you the stats.
And I understand that, you know, I'm not.
I'm just saying that, you know, it's a tool that's being used by communities to create growth, create new investment.
And I think you probably remember that when it came time to support TIF for sustainable beef, I was completely told me I was working for that.
Yes, you were.
Still am. Not that I could change my vote, but I guess where I'm going with this is we needed the jobs. We had to have the jobs. And when I look at Fremont in particular, a hundred and eighty-seven million dollars, and you mentioned Costco, I didn't know what it was, but that makes perfect sense. I'm still of the opinion that if we don't have jobs, you don't need housing. And so I think it's important that we have the jobs, and I'm glad that we used TIF on sustainable beef and would vote for it again. So those are really my only comments, I guess. Thank you.
Other? Mark?
Yeah. I have a couple of issues with the study, reading through it. Once again, we brought in the trailer park and the industrial area, and we're told they're missing sidewalks. Well, they're not missing them. When they were built, they were built according to code, and they weren't required. And I assume that's to help keep construction costs down, which is a good idea, makes it affordable to live there. I caught another sentence that now if somebody has rated average, it's considered blighted and substandard. We just keep pushing the envelope on this. It's like gerrymandering a political district. Out at the golf course area, when they did that, they left all the nice houses out of the study. So I guess that might have made it not being able to be blighted. So you got a donut hole there in the middle. The more the government helps us in housing, the more expensive it gets. The 2008 recession, well, that was government policy because they believed that everybody has the right to have a house. Well, I'm of a different mind. I was raised that it's a privilege to own a home. You know, you have to go out and you have to achieve something in life. And if you just make it so everybody can own a home, you have the problem that they may not be able to maintain a home. And to give somebody something they can't maintain is not a good act. But that's the main problem. The more the government helps, the more the cost goes up.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, calling the question on item number fifteen, please. Item number fifteen is passed. Item number sixteen, public hearing. Adopt resolution as presented in council materials regarding the extremely blighted determination study for North Platte, Nebraska as prepared by Information, Art, and Approval of Related Actions. Is it a public hearing? Opening the public hearing officially. Anyone has any comments? Please approach the microphone. Let us know what your thoughts are.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Steve Budke. I live at 920 Dillon Circle here in North Platte. I don't have any, either direct or indirect, investment in anything regarding sustainable beef, the annexation of this property or anything like this. But I have worked in the Chamber of Commerce and Econ Development, in DevCo, for probably about twenty-five years until about 2018. And projects like this just didn't, didn't appear on the table. I want to congratulate you for the past few years, the heavy lift to bring sustainable beef to fruition. We still got a couple of years to go before we start seeing those jobs appearing. We have to have the housing. And Mr. Pearson's referred to that property that I, we drive by all the time on the way to the airport down Phillips as a donut hole. I don't refer to it as that. I refer to it as an economic black hole. That property has not supported this community, has not helped our citizens, it has not helped any people that want jobs or to start a business. It just is economically not feasible to do almost anything in that area. And for us to have local investors and a developer who's willing to take on this massive project, that's an absolute game changer for our community. Well, I ask you to fulfill the vision that you've started. Have the courage to finish this because this will elevate us in ways that we cannot even see over the next decade or so. So I'm totally in support of it, and I thank you for hearing my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question or comment?
I move we close the public hearing?
Waiting to see if you'd wait the whole five seconds. Motion by Volz, second by Garrick to close the public hearing. Calling the question on closing the public hearing, please. Public hearing is now closed. Council will now consider item number sixteen. Adopt resolution as presented in council materials regarding the extremely blighted determination study for North Platte, Nebraska as prepared by Information, Art, and Approval of Related Actions.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution as presented in council materials regarding the extremely blighted determination study for North Platte, Nebraska as prepared by Information, Art, and Approval of Related Actions.
Second. Motion by Volz, second by Garrick. Questions or comments on item number sixteen? Donna?
Okay, thank you. Along with my discussion today, it's my understanding that if this becomes an extremely blighted determination for homes and six hundred and some houses, I think, were planned out there, if one house has one child, that's six hundred more going to our public school system. And those tax dollars on the increased value of the property for twenty years will not be supporting the schools. Do I understand that correctly? No? That isn't the way it works if it's a housing development.
The school system has identified that they have room for a thousand students based on their current situation.
I understand that, but what's their budget going to be? Who's going to, the property owners in North Platte are going to have to support an increased budget because you know they can't hold their budget with that many students in the high And I will say.
I'm not in the school system, so I don't know.
I know, but I mean, common sense is going to go up. So I'll just say, when I moved here, I had half the house and twice the taxes from where I came from. I was shocked, and those property taxes have not gone down, and I don't see any future of them ever going down with all these tax increment financing. Plus, there is not as much transparency with the tax increment financing funds a developer gets or accountability. We don't know for sure. Everybody that speaks says it won't happen without it. If you've got a crystal ball, I'd like to use it because I'd like to know. To me, it's like a tool out there, everybody knows about it, and of course, they're going to ask for it. Why wouldn't they? So those are just my thoughts. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Lucas?
Yeah, I was doing some research on this, you know, I was, I'm sure just like you guys, I was trying to think about philosophically, okay, we've got a little bit of a can of worms here because this is the first extreme blight. And once you step into this, others who are ineligible are going to be asking for it. And so the first thing I did, I think I shared some at the prior meeting, that I ran what a bond comparison would look like, and I was actually surprised, the difference wasn't quite as large as I thought it was going to be on the backside. But as I was thinking about, you know, this potential, I don't mean can of worms in a negative way, but it's a, you know, once you open these things up, then again, but I also think that you're putting the open-for-business sign out because you've seen Lincoln and Omaha and Grand Island do this, and we all know they're open for business, as is Lexington. But then it hit me that, remember Amendment Two from 2020? This went to the voters, and a lot of people probably don't remember that. But TIF is a constitutional amendment, and in the 2020 general state election, Amendment Two, that was the year that Amendment One was the. two, that was the year that amendment one was the slavery item, and then you had the gambling initiatives. And I'm talking about those questions that you have to read four times to figure out if it's a backwards yes or forwards no. And initiative two was a very clear expansion of TIF from 15 to 20 years of eligibility, still under local control, that tied to the extreme blight, and was actually very specific on the requirements that tie back into the study. I was actually surprised when you read it all, how closely it reconciled exactly back into the study. The statewide results were 61.15% in favor of amendment two, and the rest was against, so 39. So it was a huge, it passed tremendously at the statewide. There were only eight counties, nine counties that were opposed to it in the state, none of which were over 1,500 people. We were actually the closest. It passed here in Lincoln County, that initiative passed. And so after, after doing the research on the 2020 election, I think I slept better because I thought to myself, you know, I don't have to decide philosophically if this extreme blight is a good idea or not, because the voters made this decision less than three years ago, or I guess about three years ago, a little over three years ago. So I got a lot of comfort that the fact that this has gone through the election cycle in such a recent time period.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Garrick?
Mr. Mayor, I think this might be a Judy question, if I borrow you, please. All right, so what currently are blight and substandard is currently at 30% right now, is that correct?
With the addition that just happened in the last agenda, yes.
And if we do the extreme blight and substandard, that drops that off of that percentage, and it'll drop us down to 23%?
Correct.
So extreme blight and substandard is a 20-year window. After that 20 years, does it automatically go back just to a regular blight and substandard, or how does that work?
That question was asked, do you remember, Bill, what that answer was? Because I think we asked that at Planning Commission. I think it re, go ahead.
I vaguely recall what you're talking about, but I, I don't remember what the answer to that was. So I, I would have to look into it a little bit further to give you a solid answer on it.
Yeah. It, it does say in state statute, and I think we did look that up at the Planning Commission level, but it does say in there what happens with that.
If making this extreme drops our percentage down, is there a cap on extreme blight?
I don't believe there's a cap on extreme blight at all, as far as we could possibly go in. I mean, it wouldn't make sense, but you could possibly go in and have the whole city as extreme blight, and which would drop our percentage, I mean, way down. So yeah, I do not believe that there's a cap on there.
So what's the downside, and what's stopping us from just blighting the whole town in extreme blight?
Well, so a few things. So if you look at, if you, if you look at those maps that were in this study, it shows the area, which is kind of the north side, comes down to the east side, in like yellow, I believe, or one of them's pink for poverty, one's yellow for unemployment. So that's the area that would qualify, but there's a couple of things that makes it qualify. It has to be in an area that's already designated blighted and substandard, and it has to be eligible through the poverty and the unemployment rate. So in that area, there are a couple of other areas that are designated as blighted and substandard that we could go back and put extreme blight, because they would qualify, because they're already blighted and substandard, and they're in that highlighted area on those maps. But a lot of those other areas wouldn't qualify, because they're not already designated as blighted and substandard. But yeah, I like what you're thinking.
Judy, go ahead. I have a question for Judy.
Oh, go ahead, Donna.
Thank you. So how do they figure poverty and, and unemployment in an area that's a cornfield or alpha? I mean, you know, when.
It's all based off of, I'm not the numbers guy, that's why we hired a consultant to do it, that's why Innovation Art does it, but it's all based off of the ACS 15-year survey. So it's the American Community Survey that's through the U.S. Census Bureau. So it's based off census tracts. So the U.S. Census Bureau divides the city into census tracts. A lot of them don't make sense, some of them do, but there are different squares on the map, and you can kind of see that on a few of those maps that are there. It's the dark black line is a census tract. So each of those census tracts, you may only have 15 people in one area, because there's a large chunk of it that's a cornfield. Those 15 people is what makes that census tract qualify for poverty, unemployment, low income, whatever it is. Another area of a census tract may have 500 people in it. It's just based all off of that census tract information from the U.S. government.
And those lines are on some of these maps?
Yes. They are kind of the darker black. It's probably easier if you have a colored map.
I know, it was all black and white, and it was kind of difficult to actually figure this out.
Yeah, but if you look at the colored map, you'll see those squares of census tracts. Those are not roads, those are actual census tracts.
Okay. I just wondered how they did that, because I thought, well, how, what do you expect in a cornfield or an alpha? I mean.
Yep, when we do those surveys, they're counting people. You know, when the census comes out every 10 years, they're counting people, and you're in a census tract, you're also in a block group, but this goes off census tract.
So one more question, if I may. How many, not housing projects, but how many housed individual living units do we have in our future? Haven't been built yet, but they say they're going to. Do you have any idea? Because I think we're way, if we built everything that we have passed, talked about.
We're not going to overbuild on housing. Right now, as of today, I think it stands that we need 1,000 housing units right now, today. So if we build everything that is proposed to be built today.
Right.
We're going to be under that. And we need 1,000 units today. And every year that we, or every month that goes forward, we need a couple more housing units. So we're still behind.
It seems like we should be way ahead of the ballgame.
We are way behind the ballgame.
It seems like we've passed so many housing future projects, and, okay, I'll do.
We're behind, we're still going to be behind.
I'll do some counting, because I know just that one is like 600 and some, so.
We'll still be behind.
Take a good jump. Thank you.
Other questions for Judy? Mr. Lucas?
Just real quick, I think you could address Councilman Garrick's question. My understanding on this, Judy, with the extreme blight, is that that changes the sunset time limit of the individual bonds from 15 to 20 years. It isn't just a 20-year designation on the blight and substandard, extreme blight and substandard track. So like, for example, the way I understand it, if you had a track that you designated, you could have a redevelopment project this year that could pledge taxes for 20 years, and then you could have one a couple of years later. So I think the, the bond timing is what changes, not the, the, not the designation timing. Is that, if that's right, Judy?
Yeah, and I think, and I didn't, didn't want to say anything without checking statute for sure, but I do believe it's just like blight and substandard. Once you designate it, it stays until you go in and undo the process.
I don't think the nature of my question is more in relation to percentage than the bond issue, because if we, if we extreme blight, our percentage drops down, and we tip a bunch, and then 20 years it automatically bumps up, we could find ourselves in an issue, so that was a thought.
Or if areas in the future, you know, hopefully the redevelopment occurs, and they don't qualify anymore in the future. I can see that, because you have to meet the poverty and the unemployment tracks. So that, to me, will be the interesting thing down the road. I'll be long gone for that discussion, but, it'll be years down the road, but the, I think that could be the other thing that comes up, of what do you do when those areas have gone through redevelopment, they don't meet the criteria anymore?
And we do, there is a process of, essentially you go through the same steps that we're taking now to declare it to, I don't know if deblight or undeclare is what it is, but you basically do the same essential steps to take an area out of that blight and substandard designation. So if we find ourselves getting close to a 35%, we can go through the same process and take an area that has been developed and undesignated, I guess. I don't know what the appropriate term is, but yes.
Other questions or thoughts from the council? Thanks, Judy. One community member that raised his hand. I'll give you two minutes, please, sir.
Tracy Martinez, North Platt. When we did the program for the Walmart Distribution Center, Governor Joe Hams told us that this was a test case. If you have any doubt as how it's going to work, look at Walmart Distribution Center. Look how much infrastructure is brought in. The sales tax that we get from that intersection is the gravy that the city wants. So we pay a little bit of money for a curb or a driveway, something like that, or infrastructure. When we're dead and gone, it's going to be there, and it's going to be making money, because it is the cash cow. And like I said, for anybody who has a question of how, what you do, you should talk to Richard, Richard Byers, who was the chamber leader at that time. And when he drug me into the office and wanted to pound it into me that we needed to, he was stunned that I was for it. Why? Because kids that I grew up with has great jobs over there, that they would never have at all. There's, and even if they build out there, all the stuff that goes around the lake, along the Furnace Road of there, that's because what is brought in just by Walmart. You have the truck stops out there, McDonald's and everything, and we're making money hands over fist over a vacant field that wouldn't be there. So I'm for anything that you, you develop, and if it's, well, will never be done in 20 years, hopefully this town will be here more than 20 years. And the problem about having housing and stuff like that, you have to remember, North Platt don't make babies. There's not enough people here to make babies to keep it going. That's just the statistics. We knew that back in the 70s, when the school district started cutting back the elementary schools and everything. The problem is the last 40 years, and I said this at the last time, and Livingston, the mayor, jumped on me that it's the city council's fault that we are where we are 40 years later. And I think you should push it through, because I don't lose sleep about taxes. When I was born here, we've been paying property taxes on the same property since six, since 43. And we've paid enough taxes, we've bought our sidewalk in front and the pavement and the sewer line like that. And all I do, all my life, is pay city taxes. I don't buy new cars, I don't do anything, I just want to have to pay my city taxes, because where else am I going to move? North Platt is the center of my universe. I was born on West 9th Street, I'm going to go over and buy my headstone at North Platt Monument, and they're going to plant me in the ground at the city cemetery. So within six blocks, I want something to go on here. And it is shameful how the city council has put us in a rut, and you should push it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Council, do you have any other questions or thoughts? Seeing none, calling the question on item number 16, please. Item number 16 is passed. Item number 17, approve the claims.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the claims.
Second. Motion by Rieker, second by Nisley, calling the question on approving the claims. Claims are approved. Public agenda request. We respect our city employees, request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. This is the point in the agenda which anyone has a public agenda request item, you may approach the podium and let us know what your agenda request is.
I'd like to have on the public agenda a discussion about extending West 8th Street from Curtis Street to Adams Street. And I would like to use, let me see, LB, LB 1065 for funding. This, imagine it.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes?
I'm sorry, we got your request, thank you.
Oh, is that all? Very good, very good.
We don't have debated after agenda requests. Thank you. Anyone else? Agenda request item. Mr. Rieker?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn. Second.
Motion by Rieker, second by Volz to adjourn, calling the question on adjournment. Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone. Stay warm, we're going to have a little weather in the next few days. See you on January 16th.
I heard it was going to, there was a storm, but I didn't know if we.